Pratt with First Presbyterian will lead us in prayer this morning. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, council members and city staff. Thank you for the privilege of praying for you. Lord, thank you for all your blessings to us. We are so grateful to be able to live in this wonderful part of your creation. And we want to pray for the city of Bonita Springs and all of its residents that you might continue to bless us and lead us to an ever better future. And as the released pastor prayed in the White House for the president recently, so I pray for these leaders of our community that you might give them wisdom and protection and strength and compassion and ability to hear and inability to decide well. We pray that you will guide them, that they might guide and lead us. We commit this meeting and pray for its strength and for its effectiveness. I pray this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Corumba, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Here.
Councilwoman DeWitt?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Simmons?
Here.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Here.
Councilman Gibson?
Here.
Councilman Horace?
Here.
Good morning, everybody. How are you? Glad you're here with us. We're going to start with public comment on agenda items. Members of the public that would like to speak on agenda items, please come forward at this time.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Don Thompson. I am a parishioner of St. Leo Catholic Church, and I'm here to comment on item 6HH, which is on the consent agenda. I'm also a volunteer member of the building committee at St. Leo Catholic Church, and I just wanted to thank this council and staff and Arlene for helping us to get through this issue with the bald eagle. I think we've got something that's agreed to, and we really, really appreciate your staff and how much work they put into this to help us get back into completing our construction. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Don. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Good morning. How are you?
I'm great. How are you?
Well, thanks.
Thank you for a short time. I'm James Unland. In this context, I am a bald eagle photographer and filmmaker. In the last 10 years, I have probably done 10,000 hours of video on the half a dozen nests that I follow in this area. My comment is regarding the St. Leo situation. I am proposing, and Laura Gibson is aware of this, I am proposing to lend some video cameras to the church and collaborate in terms of videotaping long form, meaning five hours and so on, the eagle's nest. In eagle watching, there have been a number of disputes around the country of, well, I saw this and I saw that types of things. Video is by and large incontrovertible. And so I would like to, as an experiment, as a trial for the city and, of course, in helping the church, not replace their human observations, but supplement those this time around. And then if this works out and it goes well, I would donate cameras to the city. I'm not asking for anything. I am going to try to break the ice with the church and work with Laura, but I just wanted to let you know that's what's on my mind. Thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Kathy, no? Okay, seeing none. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Oh, excuse me, before we do that, anybody that's parked at the post office, if you could move your car, please? Please don't park at the post office. Park over here or unfortunately across the street if you have to, but try to stay out of the post office if anybody's over there. Thanks so much. Consent agenda, yes, Amy?
I want to vote it all, but I'd like to make comments after on a couple of them, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that motion to approve?
Sure.
Okay, is there a second? Motion to approve in a second? And comment after. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Horace?
Aye.
Okay, comment.
I just have sort of a question really for Arlene in regard to these states of emergencies. I know we're doing them every seven days, and I think I understand why we're doing that, but are there any negatives to doing that? I think there's, when you declare a state of emergency, I know that you extend contracts or something, that's the only thing I'm aware of, and how much further are we going to do this? I mean, what is the thinking here?
So as of right now, we don't have any contracts pending based on a state of emergency. What we're looking at is being consistent with the opportunities that it might provide for the local businesses that have been impacted by these situations, and that they are working with the Department of Environmental, DEO, and the other organizations are going to have future funding available. I think that we've looked at as long as while we're seeing some form of impact that's affecting both economically, our community that we're leaving them in place, but I think we might be getting to a closer closing section now, and we'll continue to monitor what's important as far as keeping them in place for benefits for our residents and businesses.
Okay, thank you.
What's Lee County doing? Do you know of any?
I will need to check if they've still extended theirs. I believe several of the other cities have still extended theirs as well.
Yes, absolutely. Great.
We can provide a list of the cities that are still extending them, and Lee County.
That'd be good, great.
Yeah, that'd be helpful. Thanks so much. Okay, counsel, anything else? If not, we're going to move on to proclamations and presentations. And if I could have Jesse Felger come forward, please.
How are you?
Good morning. Welcome, sir.
Nice to see you. How's everything?
Thank you. Well, Jesse, on behalf of the city of Bonita Springs, for 10 years of service, this is presented to Jesse Felger as of the third day of October 2018 in appreciation and recognition for 10 years of public service to the city of Bonita Springs, signed Mayor Peter Simmons and City Manager Arlene Hunter. Thank you very much for everything. Would you like to say a few words?
It's a pretty rare thing to love coming to your job every day. This is it. So it's a great thing for me to come into work and to work with a great crew, so thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
And I would like to comment. The leadership that Jesse has at the pool is amazing. He's dedicated to his staff. In addition, I want to let you all know that he and his staff recently did a great project with Colleen and the volunteers of our community in putting some beautiful plantings all around the outside of the pool. They're a little bit behind the fence, so we're going to work on making that more visible, but their commitment to beautification in our community as well, and I would want to appreciate Jesse's leadership in that as well as his team.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jesse. And if I could have Florida Southwestern State College come forward, please. How are you? Yes, nice to see you again. Peter Simmons, how are you? Hi, how are you? You probably don't recognize me. I don't know.
Yeah. I know your sound.
Well, welcome, and thanks for being with us this morning, and thank you for coming to Bonita Springs. On behalf of the city of Bonita Springs, this is a certificate of recognition proudly presented to Florida Southwestern State College. Congratulations on the opening of the new Florida Southwestern Corporate Training Center, and welcome to the city of Bonita Springs, signed Mayor Peter Simmons, October 17, 2018. Thank you so much, and welcome to town. We're glad you're here.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely.
Glad we're here. We appreciate it. Appreciate this opportunity to be recognized. Looking forward to our new facility opening up in about the second week of November over in Riverview. We're very excited to serve this area, and thank you very much for recognizing us today.
Absolutely. And as the crow flies, you're about two minutes from my house. I'm backed right up on that part of the neighborhood.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. On behalf of the team that'll actually be housed there, I want to thank City Manager Arlene Knox Hunter for helping us with this. It's really, I was just in the concept stage when we started talking to the city. I'm also really pleased, since I'll be there, and I am a Bonita Springs resident, and it's about two miles from my house. And the great thing is that it's located conveniently to all the large companies that we serve, Hertz, Arthrex, Chico's. We're right in the middle of everything. It's a strategic location for us, for our faculty, and for our teams that actually do the training onsite in these businesses. So Bonita is a great location. We're really proud to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're very glad you're here. Thank you so much. Take care. Thank you so much. Thank you. And I think we'll do another photo.
So pleased to have you.
Yeah, really wonderful. Great news.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Don't forget pictures.
Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, wait, wait.
And if I could have the folks from the Bonita Boarding Kennel and Pet Camp come forward, And if I could have the folks from the Bonita Boarding Kennel and Pet Camp come forward, Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome. Hi, Peter Simmons, how are you?
Good morning, George.
Welcome. On behalf of the city of Bonita Springs, this is a certificate of recognition proudly presented to the Bonita Boarding Kennel and Pet Camp, celebrating 10 years in business in Bonita Springs and our very happy yappy anniversary. Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, October 17, 2018. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. It's been a pleasure to do business in Bonita Springs for the last 10 years. We've been in our new location for five years, and I'd like to invite you all to come and attend our yappy anniversary on November 10 from 12 to 4 at our facility, 9240 Brookwood Court, Bonita Springs. Bring your pets, bring your two-legged friends and your four-legged friends. We'll have food, fun, and entertainment. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Did you have anything you wanted to say?
I just wanted to say that we appreciate all the help that we get from the city and the city department, the police department, the fire department, and a lot of local support. It is fun to be in a local business and to grow with the city and provide a service that everybody seems to be appreciating. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. And we'll do some quality of reflection, I guess. Thank you very much. Congratulations once again. Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
At least 10 more.
Yes.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you. Good to see you.
Congratulations. You very much.
And I have a proclamation to read here for Florida City Government Week, October 22 to 28, 2018. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas multiple government provides, excuse me, municipal government provides services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents, making their city their home, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to the understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along the understanding of public services and their benefits, and whereas Florida City Government Week offers an important opportunity for elected officials and city staff to spread the word to all citizens of Florida that they can shape and influence this branch of government, and whereas the Florida League of Cities and its member cities have joined together to teach citizens about municipal government through a variety of activities, and whereas the city of Bonita Springs encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees to participate in events and recognize and celebrate Florida City Government Week, and whereas the city of Bonita Springs encourages educational partnerships between city government and schools as well as civic groups and other organizations, and whereas the city of Bonita Springs supports and encourages all Florida Okay. Let's see here. city governments to actively promote and sponsor Florida City Government Week, now We have an addendum here. Councilman Fred Forbes requesting to postpone to council's December 5 meeting. therefore I, Peter Simmons, Mayor of the city of Bonita Springs, proclaim October 22 Fred, rather than read all that, I'll just let you talk about that. How's that? to 28, 2018, as Florida City Government Week in the city of Bonita Springs, Florida.
Yeah, basically Chairman Kerlander of the zoning board, their committee, they've
Signed, Mayor Peter Simmons, October 17, 2018.
developed a new process, not a land development code process.
Congratulations to us. Arlene?
We could take a picture of the mayor and all of the council together.
Sure.
And it's basically a two-step process.
We'll post that on our Facebook page.
Absolutely.
And we will be participating with the Chamber of Commerce on Leadership Government Day,
When I met with Larry, actually Saturday, because I was called out of town last week due to a death in the family, and when we went through it, I told him, excuse me for
and we're doing some outreach to some schools as well to provide additional education on local government.
the frog in my throat, I told Larry that based on comments, what little had been given in chambers here, that one of the big concerns about any new process would be if it suddenly extended the length of time it took for developers to go through the process. And he indicated that their goal, and they believed they could do it, was to set up a process where if you had your ducks in order, you could go through it quicker now than you can get zoning and development orders approved. Having said that, I said, well, what's the times? And he said, well, we're about to get to that. And I said, well, I think it would be better for council to hear this concept with the timelines, where you present the current timelines and what you're proposing the timelines to be. And then there needs to be safety checks and all that. And then, so I said to him, I thought that you don't have that now, how long will it take to get it? And he said, well, he can't do it unilaterally. He's working with the committee, and then he's got to run it by the zoning board. So basically, it led to proposing it. Instead of being here at this meeting, it would be here at the first meeting in December with this additional information. And I think that is a good idea, because what could happen would be that we would hear it and we wouldn't make a decision, and we'd have to hear it all over again with the added information. So I'm all about making one presentation and getting as many decisions made at that point. So that's what was proposed, and I hope that nobody disagrees with it, because the other reason I thought it was important was Mr. Kerlander is being some kind of a guest lecturer at Cornell, and he's climbing on an airplane as we speak to fly up to Syracuse to do this lecture series with the law school up at Cornell. And I thought that he should be here, even though John Domer and others would be doing a lot of the presentation, need to have somebody here, the main person, to answer questions.
Counsel, is that okay with everybody?
I hope.
Nod of the head. Do we need a vote, or just a nod of the head?
No.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay.
I had a point.
Peter?
I see Kitty sitting there. I wonder if we could move up the Habitat ahead of the presentations.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Positively. Any objection to moving up the Habitat for Humanity? Kitty Green? Okay, Kitty, if you'd like to come on up, would that work for you? And while Kitty's coming up, I did just, I got a text message from Councilman DeWitt, as many of you know or may not know, he's up in Mexico City or certainly in the Panhandle helping folks up there with their, welcome Kitty. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning. Thank you for giving me that extra time in my day. Your city attorney has produced an agreement which I think reflects the conversation that you, sorry, that you all had a few weeks ago regarding my request for the impact fee deferment. So I'm hoping that you all will approve it. There is one correction. We can't count very well. The number of deferments should be 16, not 18. Anything else to add?
No. I made one other comment, one other change from your packet, and that was to paragraph six of the agreement. Basically, the way we set this up, because we don't know where the properties are, where they're going to be, is that Habitat has responsibility primarily for the payment of those deferred impact fees. However, if they perfect a lien by recording the agreement and the covenants as each property comes online, and so that we're paid by the owner at the time that it is resold, then Habitat has no continuing obligation. If, because we don't know where those properties are, Habitat forgets to attach the agreement or something, and we're not able to collect the deferment when the property's resold, then Habitat would be responsible for the payment. But that, I think, is the best way we could move forward quickly and address the problem going on.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve in a second. Discussion, Mike?
One question. In there, it said for two years. Does that mean the deferment program is going to be in effect for two years, or they need to pay the impact fees in two years?
What we're, we've anticipated, the original request was that Habitat expected to build up to 16 homes over a two-year period. So both the BSU credits and this agreement basically say, we're just going to give you credits up to 16 homes. There's not really a timeframe limiting it on that. It's just however soon they get to 16 homes, because I don't know what their fiscal year and what the actual timing is. There's going to be reimbursement for two homes we provided for. If they want to get reimbursement for two homes, they've already paid impact fees, they can, but then those properties will be subject to the same conditions going forward.
But the deferment isn't only for two years, it's until the house is sold?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure of that. Thanks.
But is the program itself for two years? Do they have two years to do their 16 homes? I thought that's what it said in the, in the.
It does not say that in the agreement. There was discussion about two years. The projections were two years when the item originally came to council, but there wasn't any, because it was just a move to accept Habitat's request, there wasn't a fixed date of two years. If that's something that the council would like to consider, this will be the time to do it.
The reason why I ask is, we agree, I mean, I agree that we should do this for the proposal for the 16-year, but I don't think the council has decided that there should be a general program for affordable housing.
Correct, it is not.
It is not. It's just for the specific requirement, request.
Just for the 16 units, correct.
Okay.
And as well as the BSU resolution you adopted earlier. And we've had experiences where it took a little bit longer or a little bit less time when we've done the BSU agreement previously. We went actually into a third and fourth year based on things we're working through. So it doesn't require that they have to complete those. It's just a total of 16 units.
Okay.
And once the 16 units have expired, then we would talk about that.
Because we, we as a council have not addressed any of this stuff on a policy basis. That's my one concern.
No, and if you recall from the discussion, there was some direction to start looking at a program like that.
Right.
In fact, we, Ms. Green did send the Cape Coral program. I pulled up the Collier program. So that may be something we bring to within that period, but for Habitat for Humanity, for first 16 houses they come to, this will be the only agreement covering that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? There's been a motion in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Horace?
Aye.
Councilwoman Corumba?
Aye.
Kitty, thank you, and thank you for the great work you do. Thank you so much. Okay, we're now going to have a presentation by DPZ Co-Design on Form-Based Code and City-owned properties on Old 41. And this is green sheet 18-10-0365.
Yeah, maybe. I think they're in the other room meeting, so you should bring them in.
The blue one?
The blue room, yeah. They're backstage.
This is the next step in the process of reviewing a potential of Form-Based Code on Old 41. Additionally, one of the second scopes that has been provided was to start to give some direction regarding city-owned properties within the Old 41 corridor and how future development may occur on those. I'd like DPZ to come forward and begin their presentation.
Great. Thank you very much. Welcome. How are you?
Good morning, everybody. Very good, thank you. Miami says hi. We just left this morning. So we drove from Miami. So this is the introduction to the Form-Based Code. We started work on this project a few months ago, retained by the city of Bonita Beach to basically facilitate the design and the design of infield development and growth in your downtown. You have already the wonderful infrastructure in place. We know you spent a lot of money recently, and now we need to see more vertical construction. We just were at the Starbucks, you know, up north there, but you need one probably in downtown also, besides some of the local coffee shops. You need activity there. You know, it was so obvious that everything is in place for new architecture, new growth to happen. You already have in your existing code, you have a lot of elements of Form-Based requirements. For example, you have requirements for building placement. You already know that, yes, putting buildings along the streets to animate your sidewalks, that's important. The parking needs to be hidden in the back, things like that, the building height setback. So you already have these requirements, but you have also certain elements in your current codes which make the process cumbersome, difficult to use the code. It's not very user-friendly, we are finding out, and we hear from you all. And also, one thing which we noticed is that right now, many of the things which you have for your downtown based on the old US 41 corridor redevelopment master plan, you have a very specific uses on to the, in your downtown. Basically, instead of creating more flexibility for future development, you had a very site-specific recommendations. Like one I remember was about the hotel. You know, you had like a specific parcel pointed for hospitality to happen, and that's a very specific use. You have to have much more general allowance for hospitality or mixed use or residential, commercial to happen within the downtown in a more natural way where the market works its ways, of course, within the shape and form which your community requires. And we know very well from, am I supposed to move this around? I guess, I guess that, yes. We know from the studies and all the other visioning processes which you had before in the community, that you, as a community, would like to preserve your character, you know, kind of the smaller, more quiet town feeling, not very tall buildings, maybe something of the old Florida character, the syntax of the buildings of the more relaxed resorty places like Key West and some of the older buildings. It's not very user-friendly, we are finding out, and we hear from you all. And also, one thing which we noticed is that right now, many of the things which you, you have for your downtown based on the, on the old US Forty-One Corridor Redevelopment Master Plan, you have a very specific uses on to the, on the, in your downtown. Basically, instead of creating more flexibility for future development, you had a very site-specific recommendations. Like one I remember was about the hotel. You know, you had like a specific parcel pointed for hospitality to happen. And that's a very specific use. You have to have much more general allowance for, for hospitality, or mixed use, or residential, commercial to happen within the downtown in a more natural way where the market works its ways. Of course, within the shape and form which your community requires. And we know very well from, am I supposed to move this around? I guess, I guess that, yes. We know from, from the, the studies and all the other visioning processes which you had before in the community, that you, as a community, would like to preserve your character, you know, kind of the smaller, more quiet town feeling, not very tall buildings, maybe something of the old Florida character, the syntax of the buildings of the more relaxed resorty places like Key West and some of the older buildings which you had here in the neighborhood. You have, as we are showing over there, some renderings prepared a few years back, some drawings of on the, on the, your town center, the, the park, the river, Riverside Park and the, and the, and the square. So all of these things point in the way that you care about how your downtown will look. The two main goals which we are proposing and which we see as very, very important coming in front of us with this exercise of this Form-Based Code is twofold. One is basically to create the economic opportunity and the incentives for the private sector to come in. You as a pub, the public sector already has done their work. You know, you have the infrastructure, you know, the roundabout, the award-winning projects, all the streetscape is in place, including a lot of stormwater alleviations for the developers and all of these things. So one is that, the economic incentive. And then the other one is basically to retain and to attract, to retain the young generation, you know, which you have here, but also to attract younger people. We heard loud and clear, we were here less than a month ago, and we heard that actually among the people who were, who were in attendance, they said, look, you have to provide housing for the young people. We, we heard people who are living Coral, in Cape Coral and some, you know, up north, they basically have to commute to work down to Naples, and they basically bypassed Bonita Springs. They said, you would love to live here, but first we cannot find appropriate housing, not affordable, not appropriate, not good enough. So we are trying with the Form-Based Code to provide this economic opportunity for the younger generation to be able to be housed, but also to participate in the economic development, maybe themselves to be part of this economic opportunity. And this can be done in a way by keeping the small scale, which is on your list of priorities, the small scale of the downtown, meaning you have a lot of multiple ownership with smaller lots, smaller parcels. You have restrictions on density and restriction on height in your comprehensive plan, which actually can be kept intact, more or less, if you prefer as a community to have, you know, the fifty-five foot, you know, height and things like that, and, and certain limitations on the intensity and density. And by doing that, you can control what type of development will happen. And on the other hand, we have heard, you know, more ambitious questions, oh, but don't we need a little bit more density? Can we go to more density above twenty units, twenty, thirty, forty? We received some, some questions and proposals for higher density. And that's a question of how you will deal with your comprehensive plan, number one. But there is a more practical question, which is if you increase your density above, you know, twenty units to the acre, then you will, you will need to deal with parking garages. You know, that's a kind of a mathematical thing. You know, you, you need larger parcels and you need, you will need parking garages. All of these issues actually can be resolved through a Form-Based Code. You know, if you decide on, on the form and the shape, we can create the framework for all of these things to happen within, within these new regulations. This is your older redevelopment master plan, as I said, with a kind of this sprinkling of uses which we would like to basically make into more, into larger and more flexible Here in, on page seven, we have a kind of detailed other intentions of the code to, you know, make the construction which is compatible with the old Florida style, to support the future growth, coordinate the placement, orientation and design of buildings, to capitalize on the opportunities. This is kind of summarizing. There is also the issue about calibrating of the code. You know, there has been around the country, you know, this, I mean, not rumors, but like myth, mythology, that actually Form-Based Code, codes are very limiting. They're limiting of creativity or limiting development or things like this. Form-Based Code can be calibrated according to the desires and the intentions of the community and their leadership. If you want to be very strict about your code, and you want specific style or specific look to be, to be the prevalent one, you can do that. Or you can be more relaxed and do certain things like, okay, placement of the building height, you know, maybe materials and, and things like that, and, and let it go at that, you know, or be much more specific. Like, for example, you want to have more variation along the, along the, let's say, Forty-One, Old Forty-One, and you want to have different heights. What you can do is instead of imposing a height by feet, right now you have fifty-five. So what can happen is that everybody can build up to fifty-five, you know, to maximize their, their height. If you, if you allow height by floors, number of floors, actually that's better because you have a natural variation of the, of the, of the, of the roofs and the silhouette and the skyline will be different. There are other methods, like, and I can show you a little later, you know, some examples, where you can say that a taller portion can happen only on corners. If you want, let's say, four stories to happen on corners, you can allow only on the corners, and then everything in between is three stories, or things like that. These are, these are methods of calibration, and that's a tool which we would like to introduce to you. Administration of the code, we also heard that right now it's, it's probably lengthy and not very efficient. This is what we heard, you know, on one side, on the more development side. We heard that, you know, for some things you, you have to go for basically comprehensive plan amendment to do mixed use in downtown, which is not good. You have to be able to do this by right. Mixed use should be allowed in, in the areas where it's appropriate, obviously. But there are ways where this administration can be streamlined in, in a certain way. If you want the council to be involved, you can be involved as the appeal board. But on the other side, you know, smaller projects which are complying with the, with the vision of the smart, of the, your Form-Based Code, then they can go in by right. Like, if it's like a little infill of a single-family house, or a little storefront, or something like this, they should not be going through, you know, public hearings, you know, for six months, because this makes the process actually more expensive, unaffordable, and the younger generation and the people who we want to be part of the economic process will not be able to, to participate. In, for this case, we have, you know, for larger projects, we can have a design review board, where, you know, you can, you know, have a committee of, of people of expertise, you know, who can basically make judgments on the larger projects. You know, so this is also a process which can be calibrated. Density or scale, you know, questions about, as I, as I mentioned, density is basically a number which can be shaped in different, in different physical form. We, at the end of this presentation, we have done some exercise in visualizing density. So just to show that you can have higher and lower density in buildings which are very compatible and which makes, make a lot of sense next to each other. We talk about the missing middle, which is the, all the buildings which are between a high-rise and a single-family. We, somehow in the last fifty, sixty years, we have forgotten how to build them. Townhouses, live-work units, small apartment houses, duplexes, things like this, which are actually for the younger generation, and actually for the incoming seniors. Now, you know, they don't want to have big lots, they cannot afford them, they cannot afford nor like the maintenance, all of these things. So the new markets require these smaller building types to be introduced. We are also introducing the concept of the transect, which is a method, a methodology of basically arranging the things of our urban living along a section of, from most urban to the less urban, to the more rural conditions. And in your downtown, actually, you have the perfect, the perfect framework, the perfect urban bones for doing that. Along Forty-One, you know, several blocks on each side, this is your core, this is your urban spine. Moving, you know, east and west on both sides, you go to more, towards more rural or more residential areas. So you have a kind of the natural gradation, gradation of transect zones. We did a kind of a first overlay of mapping, a mapping exercise where your transect zones can happen, and we have them here on the left. And we go from the most urban, which is usually the, we have about six transect zones, you know, from urban core all, all the way down to, you know, from, from urban core to urban general, you know, a kind of residential, rural and nature. In your case, for the downtown, you will have only three of these categories, the urban, the urban core, you, then the urban general, and then the, the neighborhood, which will be in a couple of categories. This is a kind of a first attempt. We did this with some of your staff in, in, a kind of in coordination and in consultation with them, but the mapping is part of the process of basically adopting a code. This is probably the most, one of the most important documents, because it gives you where everything is located. On the right are basically these zones, the transect zones are described. You see the T3 in the light purple is the single-family house, you know, on a lot. T4, you begin to introduce the missing middle, you know, the townhouse, the live-work, the small apartment building, you know, the six-plex or a four-plex. And then T5, which will be along your north-south spine, you have the urban center zones where it's the commercial and the mixed use is mostly focused. To explain urban form in the simplest, in the simplest kind of terms, you can look on the drawings to the left, where you have basically freestanding boxes with the parking in the front, and then the other one shows the buildings marching along the sidewalk, creating a pedestrian-friendly, human-scale environment, and you see the differences. And the Form-Based Code actually makes sure that this is what happens, that you have a lively and habitable space along your streetscape. On the right are the T-zones, T5, T4 and T3, with the, with examples of some of the building types which are under these, under these categories. Like, for example, in the T5 zone, you see that we have a range between one and four stories. The four stories is somewhat on the corner, and then there is, but there are other, other heights, you know, three stories, two stories, even one story. It will be up to you all to decide whether you have minimums, like if you want on Forty-One, maybe you, you want to, with the next redevelopment cycle, to start as a minimum at two stories instead of having one-story buildings. Or you can still leave the one-story building as your minimum and go all the way maximum to four, and things like that. These are, this is the local calibration. Then in T4, it's a kind of the more mixed, but allowing, allowing attached buildings like live-works and maybe townhouses, and then the single-family in T3. Next page, it's even more illustration. I forgot to say that the urban form actually consists of three main elements. Is the building placement, where you put the building on your parcel or your lot, the frontage type, meaning whether you have an arcade or a stoop or a storefront, you know, the type of face of the building to the public realm, and the building height. And this is basically what, what controls your urban form. And you can see here all these different types of forms. They're mostly from other places, but we have some, we, we did a synoptic survey of Bonita Springs downtown, of your downtown, and we have recorded building types which are appropriate and good-looking, and lessons which we can take from your own environment. Street hierarchy, it's important on the next page, meaning that actually you don't need and you cannot have actually excellent pedestrian frontage along the one hundred, one hundred percent of a, of a street, let's say. So we, you can, you can allocate certain places of the highest pedestrian quality and certain areas where maybe a drive-through can be allowed, or servicing, or loading, or things like that. And you can see here our kind of first proposals on the right for making this hierarchy of streets. Actually, here we had A, B and C streets along the downtown corridor. Architectural character, we know that you had a lengthy discussion in your community about architectural character. We heard also about the desire for the old Florida syntax, whether it's Florida cracker or it's other types of forms and shapes. These are things which we can easily implement, shapes of the roofs, fenestration, materials, color palette, all of these will be elements for calibration in the Form-Based Code. Parking is, of course, extremely important, and it, it is an important element in the Form-Based Code. You have some very good things going on already. You know, you have allowance for shared parking, you know, parallel parking is already, you have allocated it and built it in your infrastructure. You know, there are certain, I'm not going to go in detail, but there are certain management tools which you can, which you can implement, which is basically detaching the use from their parking. You know, the, the building can be, can have its residential, commercial use, the parking doesn't need to happen in all instances onsite. It can be offsite or a few hundred feet away, or, you know, there are examples all around the country where actually this detachment of the parking from the use is very beneficial for the main street in between. People walk, you know, they, then they patronize, you know, the breakfast places, the lunch places, the coffee shops, and everything becomes, you know, supportive of, of each other. Other, other elements of a Form-Based Code, an important one is signage, and here we have two examples on the left, I'm sorry, it's this one, on the left, you know, from your own Bonita Beach Road, you know, a kind of signage which is basically highway-type of signage, and then signage which is appropriate for Main Street. For your downtown, you know, there are appropriate rules and requirements, and they are very metric-oriented. You know, the size of a, the size and the material, and the way a sign is, is incorporated in a main street is of extremely, of extreme importance. We have found out that the most successful main streets actually have a very highly managed and highly designed system of signage and wayfinding within their downtowns. We also focus some attention on a couple, actually not a couple, like four conceptual site studies. We were encouraged to look at possibilities of infill in the lower residential areas, in the lower intensity residential areas. On page twenty-eight, you can see the locations for these infill studies. Page twenty-nine, here on the right, we are showing infill of single-family housing, but a kind of a different type of housing, with a recovery of, of an alleyway, which was existing before, but it was a kind of buried or forgotten. So it's a kind of recovery of this alleyway and allowing for garages to happen off of this alleyway with the possibility of a granny flats. You know, that's a kind of the, bringing in a natural, a natural way of more attainable housing for younger people, whether they're students or whether they are granny flats. We call this, you know, attainable, attainable housing possibilities. It's also for working families, you know, helping with their mortgage, or just for extended family purposes. On next page, we have another example of infill. These are real, basically real examples where we found some either redevelopment options or empty lots, where you can introduce, on the drawing to the left, where you, you can introduce in an area of especially T4 overlay, or as we call it, transect zone, you can introduce a small four-plex to six-plex apartment villas. We call them apartment villas, they can be condominium or apartments. It is not essential, interspersed with single-family housing. They're very compatible with single-family housing. Historically, in all of our traditional American towns, we had them sprinkled within the residential, I mean, single-family housing. We simply have forgotten that that's a kind of a flexible building type. On the right, you can see even a more detailed drawing from other projects of ours, and also their built image, like the drawing on, I mean, the, the photographs on the right, you can see that this can be a, easily, you know, a single-family mansion. And then-- And then, uh, above, it's in the three-dimensional drawing on the right, uh, uh, upper corner, uh, shows the whole range of the missing middle housing, starting from a small cottage, uh, to the duplex, uh, through a cottage court, uh, another one sideyard, uh, townhouse, and a small apartment building. So all of these, uh, all of these building types that can be reintroduced, uh, in our neighborhoods, especially the ones which are close to, in walkable distance, uh, to your downtowns and to your main streets. These are the people who you want to, uh, patronize, uh, the businesses along the street. Um, uh, Site Three is in a T four, uh, overlay, uh, it is replacing an existing trailer park, uh, on, um, Shriver Avenue and Wilson Street. It's just an example what can be introduced as a, a kind of a tool of introducing smaller building types, uh, duplexes in this case, which look exactly like single-family housing, uh, and they are, um, uh, framing, uh, common green. Uh, and you can see the drawing, uh, I mean, the photograph on the lower, uh, right side, uh, how this green, uh, can look, what, what the, the character of this space can be. Um, and it's not that important that, you know, the houses are not single-family, but they are smaller houses, and, or they're duplexes. Uh, what is important is the form and the public space. We also looked at the bamboo site. Um, we were asked to, um, to, uh, a kind of, uh, look at, uh, some of the aspirational renderings which you did a few years ago, uh, shown on the right, and see how this can be translated into a viable, uh, and developable site. Uh, this is one of many options. Uh, we have, um, not yet, uh, gone in detail, um, uh, with, uh, with, uh, with, uh, with staff on, on the other assignment, which was looking into, uh, several different variations of the bamboo site. This is one of those. Uh, but in principle, uh, what it comes to is that this will be a very important anchor, northern anchor of your main street. You know, if your south, um, south gateway, uh, to your downtown is from Bonita Beach Road, your north anchor will be the bam- bamboo, uh, property. If you are successful to create, um, uh, a kind of an attraction there, in terms of connecting with the linear park along the, uh, along the water, whether it's, uh, um, restaurants and cafes and things like that, along the waterfront, along the, the river, uh, riverbed, um, whether it's some residential or live-work units, or office space, or even, even, uh, hotel, I mean, all of these, uh, possibilities exist. Uh, what is important is to, um, remember that this is, uh, these are large parcels, and they can be a very good, uh, repository of parking. So in this case, we are proposing one surface parking lot to the north and one garage to the south, uh, but it can be explored in any other way, with only surface parking, with two garages, with the garage to the north, and, and so forth. So, um, there are different possibilities, it, this is a very important, this is a very important site, and, uh, these drawings, uh, explain, um, just one of, uh, multiple options which we'll be discussing at another, uh, on another occasion. Uh, but actually, uh, it is an interesting also, uh, case study of how the Form-Based Code can be applied. This can be your model of how the, um, and because the city has, uh, the land, this can be a kind of the model for any kind of future infill and future development, and creating this anchor which will, which will draw development in between. Um, then, uh, we have done some building height studies, um, starting with one-story, two-stories, different setbacks, mixing the heights. Um, this is the existing, uh, the existing Old Forty-One in the middle, uh, more to be discussed on that, but this is basically the exploration, the introduction of, um, of, uh, how the street will look. It can be, uh, shocking that it can be so urban in the, in the latest drawings, you know, at the four stories, but you can see that, uh, they can, uh, accommodate all other combinations of heights and forms. Uh, there are ways also to mitigate, uh, you know, height, if you go to four stories, let's say, or if you are at three, with the building setbacks, which you already have some of those, uh, in your current, uh, code. Um, next one, this is the synoptic survey which I mentioned, which is basically, we walked and drove through your downtown and, uh, your adjacent neighborhoods, and found the different types of behavior, if you wish, of buildings, uh, within their environment, and some of them good, some of them not so good. So it's, uh, something from, uh, from, from these examples, we derived, uh, uh, multiple lessons of what works-
Some misbehaving houses, is that what you found?
Yes, yes, like, for example, you know, with, uh, multiple, uh, parking spots at the front, uh, without, um, uh, and some of even of the commercial, of the commercial entities, you know, not behaving in a responsible way to create the pedestrian, uh, and compact environment which, uh, we all are striving for. Um, then we plugged in, and this was, uh, basically kind of in response to some of the questions which we had at the public workshop of a few weeks ago, uh, we plugged in a few, a few, um, a few pages, uh, Form-Based Code as codes as applied in other places, and we just limited to, um, two, three projects, um, within, we, in Florida, where, uh, some of the results are proven already. You know, you have a Form-Based Code, what does it do? Does it do anything to your, uh, to your tax base? Does it do anything to your, uh, to, to how the place looks? Does it do anything to your economic development? And we have, um, you know, a greenfield development, you know, a resort seaside, with the first Form-Based Code actually, uh, done in the, uh, early eighties, uh, the first Form, Form-Based Code in the country. And then, um, all the way going through, uh, well-known Naples, Fifth Avenue, which is, uh, depends from which, from which side you look at, whether you want to probably follow some of the lessons from there to incentivize development, you know. They, they had a main street which was in really dire shape, um, uh, twenty, almost twenty years ago, I think that we just celebrated twenty years ago there, and, uh, or maybe more, I don't remember anymore, was a long time ago. And then, uh, and then also Fort Myers, uh, where we did the, uh, Form-Based Code in, um, two thousand and one, I believe, or something like that. And you can see, you know, what kinds of, uh, what kinds of lessons we can derive from these places, so that's why we put them in, so we don't think, oh, also West Palm Beach. West Palm Beach is a good, a good example. Again, they had a dead main street, you know, a lot of, uh, empty land, a lot of things which, uh, were not happening according to, um, a kind of the vision of the community, and they got together and under their, uh, kind of leadership of, of their leaders, they decided that they will, uh, put, uh, any future growth into the mold of their vision, which was, uh, basically put into law by their Form-Based Code. Um, and then, uh, at the end, we decided, because of all the questions which we received during our, um, interactive workshop, uh, it's about visualizing, uh, density, uh, you know, because the density always comes as a big question, oh, is it twenty, what do you think, which is good, better? Is it sixteen units to the acre, twenty units, or how about forty units to the acre? And sometimes, you know, these numbers are abstract, and we don't have such an answer for you. Uh, density can be, as I said, can be molded through the, uh, or extruded through the mold of a Form-Based Code, and you can, uh, you can achieve different environments through different, uh, with different, uh, numbers. So here, we were thinking that in the T five core, you can go to three and four stories. Actually, here we didn't even show, uh, four stories. Uh, only with three stories, you can go to twenty, twenty-four units to the acre, and it looks like mixed-use loft building all the way to the, all the way to the left. A small apartment building, uh, can go to sixteen, twenty units to the acre, and it's like either fourplex, sixplex, you know, eightplex in some cases, and they look like big mansions. They're very successful in, uh, anywhere. We build them, especially, you know, younger families, before they have kids, even with kids, they love this, this kind of apartment living. Uh, also, uh, seniors love these places, they're in the middle of everything, they're in walkable distances, but also feel like they're in a residential community. Uh, and then the townhouses, which are, uh, you know, density is twelve to, uh, eighteen units to the acre, uh, and then, uh, the next one is live-work units, it is basically commercial on the ground for living above. As you can see, the T zones, T five, T four, and T, uh, T five, and, uh, and we had the two, two, two types of T five, one is a core and the other one is an edge, and then a T four, see how they overlap? The beautiful thing about a Form-Based Code is that things are not, uh, they're not, um, uh, they, they do not minimize flexibility. There is a lot of flexibility because all the metrics, all the numbers within a, uh, Form-Based Code are, are basically, um, parametric. You know, we have usually, uh, minimums and maximums, and, and also the building types can happen in each zone, uh, or to some extent, like, for example, in the T three zones, which is more residential, you know, the more residential, uh, building types are happening more, but then there is a middle ground, like between T four and T five, where they start, uh, overlapping. What I mean is like, for example, a townhouse can happen in T, in T four, but it can happen also in T five. And it can happen, the difference will be, it's a front setback. In a less urban area, it will have a deeper, a deeper front, uh, yard, let's say, a little garden in front of the townhouses. In the more urban area, it will be shallower, it will be a wider sidewalk, you know, the trees will be a certain way, there will be parallel parking, so it's about the environment, uh, along the transect, from urban to, uh, more rural. And here, these are the lower zones, where we go to, uh, to, um, cottage courts, you know, this is the cottage court which I showed you on the, on the, um, uh, trailer park site, uh, where, you know, the units, the numbers are between, you know, ten to sixteen units, um, you know, sideyard house and courtyard, another courtyard house type, you know, twelve to sixteen, all the way down, you begin six to eight units, all the way to three, five units, which is basically a suburban density in your, uh, more suburban residential areas. Uh, so you can see that this variety of traditional types, they can coexist, uh, basically along one street, all of them, they, you can arrange them along a street, and you can still have a harmonious and pedestrian-friendly, uh, good environment which will support a lively, vibrant downtown. Uh, we received some, um, comments that, you know, people want to see galleries and cafes and artistic, more artistic venues, and things like that. And all of this activity needs to be actually supported by a vibrant residential and a really, um, younger, uh, younger people coming to, to these neighborhoods, living and, um, and doing business there as well. So, uh, this is a kind of in short, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel? It's your pleasure. Fred?
Couple things, um, you, you talk about these calibration tools. Are you gonna come back and give us your recommendations based on input or something? Or are you looking for that to be done by council, community development, or? And I, I got a couple other questions besides that one, but-
Sir, I, I can help, Galina. This is the first phase of the project. We would be, if, and it was an introduction of Form-Based Code, an introduction to the community to Form-Based Code, if we wish to move forward, we would be looking to continue services with DPZ as far as drafting, um-
The language.
This language, so that would become a part of the ordinances.
Okay, now, based on the assumption that we move forward with this, give me a minimum and a maximum on how many months it's gonna be before we're at a point that we have what you call a nearly finished draft code?
Well, it actually will depend a lot, uh, on you, you know, because we will probably do it in phases, um, whether it will be, uh, done by chapters, or, uh, first, I, I think it will be probably done first like, uh, a main chassis or a framework, so you agree on the main, uh, chapter, on the kind of the, 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 the body of the, of the downtown code. The thing is that here, we're talking about a smaller, uh, finite, uh, geographic area, which is good, you're not doing the whole city, we're not doing, you know, everything. It's like, it's a very, um, uh, a kind of defined area, so this makes our, our job easier. I don't think that the mapping will take a long time, uh, there will be debates and, and, and discussions among yourselves, probably more with the community and, you know, the, in the public process, but, um, I mean, I, I don't think I can give you a timeframe right away, but, uh, these processes have, um, have been between, uh, six months and five years. You know, five years, uh, four years was Miami, you know, but it was the city of Miami, so it's, it, it doesn't need to be that exorbitant, because you have already done a lot of preliminary work, you have a lot of this, the DNA of the Form-Based Code is already in your documentation, you have a lot of these things in your comp plan, you know, as requirements for, uh, you know, uh, pedestrian environments and all this, so I, I think that we can, you know, compact it as much, as fast as you, as you want it.
One thing that I'm gonna propose that I think we should do, and that is when you are basically at that nearly finished draft, done, done, I'd like to see you analyze with the code that you have proposed, the three, three projects, one that's up at the north end of Terry that just got approved, I mean, north end of Old Forty-One in Terry.
Mm-hmm.
Then the longitude and the mosaic. Now, then come back to us and tell us if this is in, if we adopt it, here's what they would have to do differently. Doesn't mean we're not gonna say, that's fine, we agree with you, but we, I think that would be a good place to start, because that way you can translate what's written to three different projects. We didn't, I think only two people on the current council had anything to do with approving longitude or mosaic, but they're gonna be built, so we'll, it, it will just give us an easier way to judge-
Mm-hmm.
-whether we like it or we don't like it, and whether we think we need a change.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We can do that, this, this is basically, um, the easiest way to illustrate. You know, we tried to do this also with, uh, with the bamboo property, you know, to show, you know, what, the thing is that it's a little bit more unusual, first because it's a larger parcels, that's why this is there, it's, you know, big potential, and also the river, it's not your, the rest of the fabric of the city, you know, it's a kind of a more odd situation. Mosaic is also a big parcel, you know, where it's, you know, uh-
I, I'd rather see you work on a project that's prospective than going back and-
We can analyze it very fast.
We've already approved, I mean, those projects have all been approved.
They're going forward.
And so we could even, we, it, just a minute, we could, you know, we could say we like it, I mean, I have my own personal opinion about some of those projects, um, and I think, but I do think, if we're going to have you do work, I'd rather do prospective, and I would focus on the bamboo proj- projects, I have lots of questions about that, of, of how we could proceed there, um, and, and I think that would be more illustrative of where we wanna go, and it would be more helpful to us.
Mm-hmm.
Is Mosaic being built?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we saw, we saw the bulldozers there, and, I mean, not the-
I'm sorry, Mosaic, uh, Longitude.
Longitude.
Yeah.
Currently, we're not aware of that moving forward.
It's properties for sale.
Correct.
Right.
But it's approved, isn't it?
I mean, yes, it was being built, yeah, it's being-
Yeah.
But I, but I think that knowing what effects it would have on these three that have been approved is the best way for the people to know what they're getting now, and if, if we, I, I don't wanna do it because Greg's not here, but if I have to, I wanna vote on, 'cause I think it needs to be done, it's not gonna take that much time, and we should know, that doesn't mean that we would say, change it, but we ought to have a right to know what, what would be different on those projects. And I didn't vote on two of them, I don't even know if I like both of them, but I'd like to know, if it went through the way we're proposing to do it, what would be different? Let's see, and-
I think that the, the, these projects, the analysis of these projects may help us, um, for the future, you know, to see how, you know, how we want to see it, you know, better or in other ways, you know? I, I, I think that there are some lessons to be learned, you know, it's not gonna take a lot of time, or-
How much money?
Well, I mean, I, I don't know.
How many hours?
It can be part of the, it can be part of the, part of the, of the process, it doesn't need to be like a separate, it can be put as a task, or, I mean, we can, we can, we can discuss that at a later, I mean, I cannot tell you now how much money, it's like, we, I have to, I don't know, for example, Longitude, I don't, I don't remember, which one is the Longitude? I know Mosaic and the other one, the Terry, but Longitude, I don't remember.
We can review. Also, one of the things that we, we learned from DPZ is that the larger tracts are really atypical of our downtown, the majority of our development is gonna be the smaller, the smaller lots that are a little bit more challenging as well, so I think that's also a point of focus that Galina and I have discussed before, is unless somebody- is unless somebody comes in and purchases multiple, uh, lots of these smaller lots and creates, um, an assemblage, which we, we did have in this experience, but that's gonna be a little bit more atypical of what happens in the downtown, especially along the Old Forty-One corridor. But as you move out into the more, the, the lesser transects, that's where we were looking at opportunities for, um, the, looking at how that density would, would look i- in the fabric of those existing single-family homes as well.
Whether it'll be compatible with those.
Yeah, you have a good, you have a very good, um, framework in the downtown. It's three hundred by three hundred, um, block system, you know, with the streets and the walkability is very good. And, and you have the small, and they're, they're square, which is slightly unusual, you know? In other places, we, I mean, especially in the, just in the, um, in the, I mean, actually, it's most of the downtown area. You know, the neighborhoods to the west are beginning, are the linear blocks. Um, and in the three hundred by three hundred foot lots, um, yes, you have to basically assemble a whole block to be able to do, uh, higher intensity, you know, project with a garage and all of that. I mean...
But, but people are doing that. I mean, I mean, my one concern is if there are these aggregations that we would have not enough variety, you know, because I'm not sure that a large owner would, uh, have creativity or, or have these integrations like the way you show, which I'm very much in favor of. I think you've done a good job. I think it's, the transects are interesting to proceed on. Um, but I think the council was, I understand what you're saying, Arlene, but the council had a big discussion about whether we should sell the bamboo prop- property. So I think that that's something that needs to be focused on. And I mean, I have a lot of questions about that. If it, we have to, you have to give us guidance of whether, in yours that you showed as a first example, you had a lot of commercial, you know, restaurants, you know, exciting kinds of activities in there. Um, so we have to decide if that's the direction we wanna go to, cause I'm not a hundred percent, I don't understand how, in those areas, how we can protect that from just being residential, because it seems to me like residential would be in some way the easiest and most economically efficient way. And the same areas in some of those outliers where you could say, you have neighborhood house, uh, neighborhood, um, commercial little stores and things. How do we protect those if we really wanted to be sort of residential from the commercial coming in and overwhelming the sector? So that, that part I don't quite understand, but I'm sure you know how to do that.
Yes, yes.
And so these are, these are my issues, to make sure that we get what we want where we want it. Because economically, I think, living in a place on the water, everybody wants to live on the water, you know? So people would wanna have a residential in there, I think. So if we really want a commercial, we gotta do something about that.
Yeah, or at least to have the mix. Actually, an ideal, an ideal situation, the, the, um, the density in the case study, which you see here in this, uh, in this introduction actually is with the lowest residential component. But afterwards, we have, um, several other options where the residential component is becoming more complementary. So we have also residential as a, as a, there are ways actually to be able to keep the fabric, you know, to have the small blocks. I mean, there are ways in the form-based code where we can, um, we can, um, uh, code the required perimeter of the block, the length of the block, where you interrupt with passages and things like that. So the fabric is preserved and the small scale is preserved. Even if it's done by one, one developer, uh, you can preclude assemblage, you know, percentages and, I mean, it's, these are things which can be very easily, uh, easily, um, done, including, you know, intrusion in residential areas. Uh, that's also very easy to do, you know? It's, uh, it's not, uh, you know, it can be, uh, you can allow corner store only on corners or on certain intersections.
But these are all decisions that have, well, you would guide us in that.
Absolutely. This is part of the mapping, part of the mapping, and also part of the articulating of the T zones. You know, now we saw a kind of the broad brush, um, transect zone and character of these places as we perceive them, a kind of more generic America, you know, American neighborhood in general. But you are a very, you know, special case and it's every, every neighborhood is different. That's why it's difficult to take a code and just, you know, copy it for the next, the next, uh, community, which many of the Euclidean land, uh, land use base codes were done, you know, through the, through these, you know, past sixty years, you know, basically the same code repeated.
But I like all your pictures. So, you know, I mean, I guess we should let it look like this or let it look like that, I guess is where, would be a good start.
Yeah, exactly.
So we, as a council, should say that would be something we wanna go, the direction we go, and then you could figure out how to do it if that's...
There are many communities which we have done. You know, they decided that they have to look, they want to look exactly like that and they went for it. And I, you know, keep on saying about Naples, but they decided that they are gonna look like Mediterranean, three-story, and they, they just decided and they got it. So, and other communities, no, they haven't decided on that. You know, Fort Myers is a very different place. They decided to put very tall buildings on their riverfront and they did it. Uh, the case in West Palm Beach was interesting because when we were doing the form-based code, and this was so many years ago, twenty-five years ago, when they, um, you know, uh, this was a depressed area, you know? It was like a really, West Palm Beach was really a, a neighborhood, I mean, a downtown struggling, very much struggling downtown. And we recommended certain heights. We thought that it will be big success at some point because it's like the location and, uh, demographics, everything was looking, you know, and we're usually looking twenty years, uh, you know, in the future. And we recommended certain heights. Actually, they came later, you know, after we finished our work, the council, actually, their council, uh, approved, uh, lower heights. They reduced the heights. And then a few years later, a decade later, when they were, they became very successful, they came back and then allowed again. So it's not that when you get something, you are gonna be stuck forever. Actually, a form-based code can, has this, uh, ability to provide for successional growth. Like if you anticipate, you know, big success in the future and say, "Okay, well, maybe we will allow in the future, twenty years from now, on our intersections, maybe at Bonita Beach Road and, you know, Old Forty-One, maybe something bigger and taller." You know, you just have to be prepared for also big success. And it's, you can change it along the, you know, the next generation, they change it and they calibrate. I mean, many places have gone through these ups and downs and redevelopment phases. Now you had your main street, one, one-story little shacks, but then the next generation will be something bigger and then bigger. So it's also about gradual filling in the fabric.
Thanks.
Question. What are, what are we looking for tonight, Arlene, from council?
We've completed the introduction now and held the public workshops. I think the next phase would be determine whether council would like to move forward with, um, drafting a form-based code for the downtown, for the geographical area we've discussed. Um, we simultaneously still have our process going along for the city-owned properties and we can continue that. Should we do any specific map drawings or analysis of privately-owned properties? We just wanna ensure that those are for planning tools and purposes only. They're not restrictions on any of those privately-owned properties. Um, it would just be for demonstration and conceptual level.
Illustrative, they're illustrative.
Peter?
Yeah, I would say, uh, time is of the essence. Um, and as Galena outlined it, they wouldn't go right to drafting and they would go right to, here are the basics of it. And I think that is a gating issue before we waste our time, because we've had situations where, in my view, we went down a trail and then we backed up, it ended up being a waste of time. So if we're gonna go for it, we should go for it based on having her come back and outline what are the essential parts of it. Otherwise, you're gonna go a few months down the road and just waste time and money. Um, secondly, I think that would be the gating point at which, at which you could hold this up against, uh, Mosaic, I am bespoke, the other one, whatever it's called, Terry Street Assemblage. Um, if you want, you can do it against Longitude, but that's not going anywhere. Um, that's something that was approved, that's not happening, as far as I know. It's for sale, properties for sale. So, um, I think time is of the essence.
Counsel? Amy?
Well, I, I'm in favor of moving forward in whatever process is recommended so we could do it expeditiously.
I'd second.
Mike? Fred? You're good. Fred, you're all set?
So staff, I, I don't believe we need a formal vote this time. Staff will work with DPZ to bring back a proposal and maybe we have it phased as where, where you can have, uh, decision-making thresholds first before we go into the drafting.
Okay. Counsel, sound good?
Good.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And DPZ is also here today, if any of the council members that are working with staff today onsite and they're continuing their process of that second phase, which is the publicly-owned properties.
Okay, mayor and council member items. Seeing none there? Well, unless anybody has something they wanna dive in there with. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak, please come forward. Hello, Kathy? We do.
Good morning, everyone. For the record, Kathy McGrath. You know, I never heard you do the consent agent. I don't know where I was. I must've been out in outer space or something, but thank you very much. Anyway, thank you for always giving me the consideration of speaking. Um, I do not blog or do social media. This is my Facebook. You'd be surprised how many people watch these proceedings and tell me that they do. So, uh, the first thing I wanna mention is our flood insurance. I've said this before, I'm gonna say it again. I know Arlene, with her new duties, is not working on it, but I just want everyone to know, including you, that staff works very, very hard and they keep adhering to the criteria that's required. And we are now, have reached, I have a twenty-five percent discount on my flood insurance, over a thousand dollars. I still pay thirty-six hundred, but let's face it, my elevation's ten feet and I'm on the river, so you all can just figure that out. But I, whoever's working on this, we should all say thank you, because anyone who has flood insurance is getting the benefit of it. And that, it's, it's called the Community Rating S. What's the S stand for?
R. System.
System, CRS. So if you have flood insurance, you know, go ahead and check out. And, uh, as you all, we all know, uh, October is Breast Awareness, Cancer Awareness Month, and everyone's in pink. Uh, I'm sure everyone here has either family or friends who's been touched by breast cancer. So, um, and that's not only women, it's men too. And talking about the Panhandle, Mexico Beach was twenty miles east of Panama City Beach. And what is so interesting to me is, because I just came back, I have a timeshare, Panama City Beach, right out on the beach within fifty feet, and we had very little damage, and twenty miles east. It appears that inland, you'll hear the names Callaway, Lynn Haven, and the city of Panama City had more damage than Panama City Beach. But in Mexico Beach, if you saw any of the TV things, it looks like a nuclear bomb hit it and there's this one big house standing there. And you know why? Their building code. Those people built to a very strict building code and their house is standing there. So, and finally, on Tyndale, Tyndale Air Force Base and Eglin are both there. They evacuated their planes, but they had a lot of damage too. And finally, I wanna talk about something near and dear to my heart, which is the Fifth Annual Benita Springs Short Film Fest. Our gala is November first. The date to enter has been extended. Antonio said he had some people that wanted to enter that needed a little more time, so the date to enter has been extended until the twenty-first. So if you haven't entered, you know, get busy because there's a lot of prizes, a lot of money. I think it's from five to nine, November first, at the Prado. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Other members of the public that would like to speak?
Admiral Mayor, counsel, it's good to see you all and I'd like to thank you again for everything you do. My name is John Pano. I'm, uh, the president of the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance, local resident and owner-operator of CGT kayaks. Um, just would like to thank you for taking your time and going through this, um, the code issues and working to get it right, because, um, as we did here, it's not just for us, it's for the future. These codes need to be flexible so that they can change with the times and the people that come with them. Secondly, I'd like to also, uh, make everybody aware that November third is the Benita Springs Downtown Expo. Everybody's invited to come down and enjoy the local merchants and foods. Um, there's gonna be a race on the river. Uh, the Wonder Gardens is having Birds and Brews. As you heard, that just before then, uh, the film festival would be going on. There's gonna be all kinds of things going on, um, that weekend. So, thank you.
Thank you, John. Other members of the public? Morning, Linda.
Good morning. Uh, good morning. I'm Linda Schwartz and I'm here to thank the mayor, council members and city staff, especially Matt Feeney, for your work and support on Spring Creek dredging. It's actually happening, starting today at the mouth of the Estero River, or Estero Bay, I should say. Um, the process has gone as Matt outlined. That is taking several years and coordinating with many agencies and securing permits. But, uh, it was delayed by, somewhat by Irma, but here it is. It's hap- finally happening. Um, I'd also like to thank John Dolmert and his staff, especially Sean Gibbons, for the help that, um, they've given us in Cedar Creek. As a new board member of the Cedar Creek Property Owners Association, I have sought out their assistance to bring the community into compliance with the city's landscaping guidelines. And Sean has been most helpful with this. So thank you again.
Great. Thank you, Linda. Other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. City attorney items.
I only have one, uh, item left for today, and that is, uh, last year, last December specifically, the city council passed a temporary moratorium on the conversion of golf courses. Uh, this affects a limited number of properties within the city, but the concept was that new changes would be presumed to be coming forth. We are coming on the expiration of that one-year moratorium and I'm looking for direction from the council as to whether to extend it or not. Um, staff has indicated to me that they do have some proposed changes that are ready to begin the process of going forward. Um, but I do need to remind the council that as we go beyond the one-year threshold, then there becomes a presumption that we are getting into the area of Burt Harris and takings. So we need to be actually moving forward with some sort of plan to develop changes in our land development regulations. And I'll just open it up if you have any other additional questions. Uh, and then John is here as well.
I guess the question is to staff, where are we in making progress?
I'm gonna ask John Dolmert to come forward.
It's a longer walk over here. Uh, we have received direction from council in terms of the general idea and scope of what you're looking at for redevelopment. We were also instructed not to get too far ahead with drafting, uh, proposed regulations until we had a workshop and received public input. We are ready to go at your request. We were given instructions to hold those workshops and meetings during season to make sure that all the affected residents would be here. If there's a timeline change, we would be happy to accommodate it. Uh, we just need to know what you would like us to do, because at this point, we were ready to propose, uh, the ideas and guidance you gave us, uh, during season, especially for those two communities where, uh, we could have proposed changes.
I'd recommend the beginning of season, because I think Derek's point is well-taken. We need to be moving on this.
Yes, sir.
I'm not saying we're not, but keep it going.
Yeah, I agree. Like, it's November, okay? That's season, isn't it?
What I, what I think that we, we could start doing is looking at, at dates, um, to set up a workshop and invite the public in, just to get some general ideas. The, uh, in my mind at least, the first workshop would generally be held as a discussion with some example points and discussion areas, uh, to see what the communities were looking for and what they desired. Uh, the second workshop would probably be beginning of the year and would probably include a lot more detail based upon what came out of that first discussion, unless I'm given other direction.
And then how long would it take, once we got over that, to get it into the code? I mean, could we do it in a couple of months after that?
I would think so, unless, unless the direction that comes out of these workshops puts us in a path that requires a lot of delicate crafting and, uh, wordsmithing. I would assume that a couple of months should be, should be appropriate. But once we're finished it, we could provide you an update and a schedule so that everybody understands what to expect and when.
Then I propose we extend the moratorium to be compatible with whatever schedule that, uh, committee development has suggested and we move forward unless we've changed our minds, which I don't, maybe we have, but I haven't, um, with, uh, developing a code for, uh, golf course conversions. And we'll lay on Devon to give us the date or do it so we don't get into trouble.
I won't, I won't, uh, put a, a, a date at this time. What I'll do is I'll meet with John. What I'll do is I'll meet with John and it will be another ordinance, so it'll be a first and second reading. So, that, at that first ordinance reading, hopefully we'll have a timeline laid out for you and we can discuss moving that deadline forward or backwards appropriately. And I'll also take a look, you know, one, one protection that we built in, we do have a relief mechanism in place so that someone who is affected by this, who has been waiting for this to come into adoption, can move forward and requests relief. I will look at that as well and see if we need to adjust it based on those timeframes. But at the moment, I think we're good to continue on as the path as John has laid out.
Okay. Counsel, any other thoughts? Okay. Do you want to vote on this?
Do we need to vote?
I don't think you'd.
We received direction that the next meeting we'll have the.
We'll have a draft.
We'll have a draft.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you for keeping us on board Derek.
Absolutely. Derek, do you have anything else?
I have nothing else. I, I'll let you know, things have been working out smoothly with staff. This is now my second meeting and I've, sort of the, the fire hose has been on of all the information coming in. So what I'm going to propose doing is I'm going to work with Arlene, put out a joint memo to staff on, on procedures. Another thing that I've, I've looked at where we are as far as the budget and we appear to be well below where I expect to be for the year. I obviously think that will change with certain projects, but everything I had anticipated as far as keeping the budget in line, it looks very favorable. I'm going to also amend the way I do the billing so that as we move forward, I will send the bills as I described with the time that we, we spend that we don't bill, the time that we spend that we do bill, but also by subject area so that you see, is it, are we, are we having issues in procurement? Is it land use issues? So that, you know, it's just more information for the Council and for staff on how to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Okay, City Managers' report.
Good morning Mayor and Counsel. The, the official item I have is for the review of the Charter Review Committee. As you can see, last time, names were mentioned and our city clerk has reached out to those individuals and determined their, their time schedule and if they're committed or able to serve. And then since then, we received some additional names from Councilmember Forbes. We have a draft ballot for you, as you can see, with each council member's recommendation and then we have two recommendations for the alternates. So we wanted you to take a look at that and if Laura, if you have any suggestions as well.
I do. I finally got someone to say yes. It was weird because I asked over six people and everybody was, no, no, no. I'm like, oh come on, it's not that big a deal.
Dijon apathy.
Yeah, right, 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 right. Diving right in, right?
And so I'm going to nominate Omir Dohr.
And so for the remaining members, we, we do have on file applications and we'll get an application as well.
Let me just make a comment on one thing. We have here under my name for an alternate, Robert Donaldson. I actually do not know Robert. Denny Burins, Peter.
I was just going to say, and I spoke with Denny as well. I was going to mention that.
So, let me just tee it up then.
Yes.
That, Denny called me, I know he had called Peter and at the time he talked to me, Peter hadn't called him back, so he mentioned Robert. Peter had mentioned Denny at the last meeting.
Correct.
Denny can't serve, so that's where that comes from. Highly regarded by Denny.
Yes.
Is that fair?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I had also mentioned Nigel Folick as a possible alternate at the last meeting. So I don't know, we're voting on who the alternates would be or?
Debbie, did you contact Nigel? Nigel's unable to serve.
And then what is, and the gentleman's name that Denny recommended again, I'm sorry?
Robert Donaldson.
Robert Donaldson, yes. No, I'd like to.
And he's, he's listed on your draft ballot as an alternate. Any, any names that were suggested last meeting, Debbie made contact with them to see if they were able to serve and I believe Nigel had indicated he wasn't able.
He's a former Hertz executive and he lives in Highland Woods.
Cedar Creek, I believe, but I think so. But either way, yes, I'd like to, if we could, and I know he wants to serve and comes highly recommended, does, is that okay with Counsel for him to, what, it would be an alternate? Is that what it is?
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to say, I'm looking at the wrong page.
There's no choice. I just have a question and to clarify, I, and I think that we were told that when we have this charter revision, that there's state law, some kind of law where they could only have one issue per amendment, unlike what's happened at the state level where they could have multiple issues. So my say, if that's not a law, I'd like to see if we could advise this commission to only have one issue per amendment. That's my question.
Yes, generally the, the rule is, is one issue per amendment and, and you're also limited to the amount of explanation you can give, so it becomes very difficult to do that as a practical matter. Where, in my experience, problems arise is when you have one change that necessitates another change, two sections maybe that are co-linked, but I take your point very clearly and it will be broken down to, as individual items to be voted on. That would be the result.
And then, do they work with you? I mean, does this?
They will work with me. I will probably, each community has its own way of doing it. Sometimes they use outside counsel. In the past, I've looked at, Audrey's always sat in with them, so I will intend to sit in with them, or another attorney who may be more familiar with election law issues if that does come up. So I, I will initially begin sitting down with, with the board and just sort of see where it goes from there.
Okay, thank you.
And I know Fred, you had nominated Russ Winn?
Yes, as an alternate.
Yes, and I think that, I would, I would like that as well, if Counsel is okay with that.
The, I have a couple of questions and then a suggestion. Number one, what number of meetings can a person that serves on this miss before they're off? Or is there any limit on that? While you're looking that up, I know I had told Arlene this, but I think that because this committee is going to take a long time to do its work and there'll be many times where you may have many more than one meeting a month, number of, and a lot of public input meetings, that these, something ought to be worked out. If, if a guy is an alternate, why can't their, their voice be blended in some way? Because to me, to ask somebody to sit and go to all these meetings and participate, but they don't get to vote, we don't get to hear their point of view, that's, it's not like being on a criminal case where you're an alternate to a jury that might go a week or two. This is going to, this is like the water task force or longer kind of work.
Fred, I think G provides, Section G provides for their debate, but they just can't vote or, or move it. So I think that's already in there.
Okay, good.
I thought the rules were really, yeah. Who did these rules? They're great.
These are your rules.
These are our rules?
Since we don't have rules for you to be removed if you don't show up to the meeting. But I mean, that, that can certainly be something to consider, but in my experience, these, these boards may need to, to meet, I'm sorry, the committee may need to meet more often or less often, depending on how the issues arise. That will have varying effects on everybody's schedule and it may just come down to a consensus that, you know, they need to meet and there'll be certain members who don't have issues with those items and don't feel the need to be there. But yes, the voter, the alternates will have a place the entire way along and is only at the end, if someone has resigned from the committee, that they would be entitled to a final vote or they don't, they miss the final meetings.
What is Counsel's input?
Once the committee's completed their job, they will send a report to the Council. The Council will then consider those, those recommendations and agree to either adopt them, modify them, or deny them before they're placed on the ballot.
But if we have suggestions, what's the way for us to make them as a citizen? I mean, go, go to the meeting and make one or what?
I've seen a variety of, of options. I've seen liaisons, you know, where there's one, one council member who participates. I've seen it where, where they have come and spoke on particular issues of interest. I would suggest that a written memorandum from any council member that has comments or suggestions would probably be the easiest way for the committee to feel that they have the opportunity to consider those thoughts and, and review them without feeling the pressure of a, a councilperson in the room.
Okay.
How about the public? How would they do it? Do they just send?
All these meetings will be open to the public.
So they would come and say, I think you should look at blah blah, and then they would look at it?
Yes.
Okay.
And they'll be able to submit written comments through the clerk's office as well if they can't make the meetings. And we had discussed with Councilmember Forbes is that in the report that's provided to Council, we can clearly delineate the alternate's comments and recommendations. They won't be part of the formalized vote, but they can clearly say that they were in agreement with the vote.
And there, there often is a minority, kind of a dissenting opinion, particularly on, there may be one or two issues that the, that the committee split on the recommendation on. And so often you will find that there is a dissenting opinion, you know, on another page saying, on this one issue, some members thought that this other thing should be considered.
So our list is in pretty good shape?
I believe you have a complete list, so if you wanted to move forward with your vote today, Debbie, could you please read to them each district and each representative's name that we have recorded and the two alternates for the record?
We have Jackie McCurdy, Mayor Simmons' recommendation, Amy Barber, Greg DeWitt was John Jenkins, and Laura Clark, Councilman O'Flynn, Chris Corey, Mike Gibson, Jesse Purdon, Fred Ford, Alan Horowitz, and the two alternates I have is Joe, Russ Winn, and Robert Donaldson.
Okay, Counsel?
So moved, second.
So moved in a second. Is there further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Clark?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye. Okay, thank you.
We need a chairperson for the mayor to suggest.
The mayor would appoint the chairperson.
Yeah, want to do that?
And I would be fine pointing forward Jackie McCurdy as the chair.
Second, if you need it.
Okay, good, great.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman O'Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Ford?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carumba?
Aye.
Great, thanks everybody. Fantastic, yes, Arlene?
I just have a couple of updates for you.
Sure.
And then I also have, Matt will have an update for you as well. At our next Council meeting, we want to make sure that everyone is aware that we'll be bringing STAN Tech here to give an update on the Stormwater Utility Project and the first phases of that. And they'll also be giving a little bit of an update of the timeline of how we move forward. Additionally, staff will have its first presentation, you all, on the methodology of how we're working forward with a staff-initiated inventory of all stormwater facilities, both public and private. We're going to lay out our program on how we're doing that in-house and so we can give you an idea of the timelines of that as well.
Great, thank you. Matt?
I just wanted to let you know, we yesterday just received word that we, the permits that had been about two and a half years in permitting for Pine Lake Preserve from the Army Corps of Engineers were issued and so that project is, is fully permitted at this point. There are some additional monitoring requirements that are part of those permits, so we'll be meeting with the design team as well as the Lee County 2020 folks to discuss next steps. And then obviously, that's on our LMS projects for funding, so.
This, this will keep us in very good standing for the LMS process.
Do we have an idea on the timing of that first round?
We'll need to check with Aptum and see. I think we were expected to receive contracts sometime in December or January.
Oh, okay.
But I'll double check.
One, one thing to note, I just took a quick look at the permits and because of the species, it looks like construction is limited to the dry season, so, you know, funding dependent, it may be that it's constructed not this dry season, but the following year.
Matt, will, will we get the water quality before we touch it and then we'll get the water quality after it's all done? Is that a part of the monitoring?
That's, that's not specific to the project. It's something that we can look at through our, you know, our normal water quality monitoring.
Would it be helpful on getting our credit points with the?
We've already done a load calculation and are in discussions with the Department of Environmental Protection about what amount of load they'll, they'll be crediting us for the Basin Management Action Plan in the future. The monitoring is not what you get the credit based on. It's the modeling and we've done that.
It's the monitoring, it's not the reality.
Exactly.
But that might be used in the future to argue a case for more credits down the road.
Correct.
And I just heard a comment up here, right? I mean, where, where does the rubber meet the road? Where does fact meet fiction or reality set in?
There's, there's lots of discussion about that. What I can tell you is we've done the, the load calculation about a year ago and we have been having some differing views with, with the regulators, but, you know, until the project is fully permitted, it really is senseless to, to advance that. But now we're in a position, we'll pick up those talks again and get a number ironed out we all can agree to.
There is one bright light, and that is that whoever runs DEP and all the, the top guy that can tell the minions to change things, there's going to be a change one way or the other here. So that's potentially good, may be bad, but look at it, it's a good thing probably.
Okay. Matt, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, great. Thanks for everything you guys are doing. Okay, Mayor and Counsel reports. Amy, we'll start.
Just two comments. One, I want to thank Greg for being part of the group that's out there in the Panama City area working on, I think he's still in search and rescue or something. So it just again reminds us how fortunate we were, even though we think of our experience with Irma, that we didn't have that kind of devastation because we didn't have the surge. We had a different kind. And again, we are all Floridians, so we're hopeful that that, that they will, they're starting up a process that is very long-term. And the second, I just want to remind people that London Bay Homes is having a community outreach in regard to their proposed development at the Week's Fish Camp. This is part, we had changed our regulations so that we're encouraging developers to do community outreach and even though it doesn't, they didn't have to follow it because we had a timeframe. That's this Thursday at Estero High School. I think it's at 6 o'clock. And again, it's just, they're going to describe the, the proposal. We can't do anything. I know we're going to have staff there, but if anybody's interested to see how that works and how we, it's going to work in the future, we are having, they are having that, so I wanted to point that out.
Great, thank you.
So we can go?
We can go, but we're not supposed to talk.
Right.
You know.
Great, thank you Amy. Laura?
Not talk to each other or not talk in general?
Not talk in general. But, but.
We've seen a lot of people.
No, we can't talk about the project. But I think the staff is going to, from what I understand, the way the resolution was written, that you're going to, they're going to take notes and whatever is said there will become part of the record, so you don't have to go unless you want to observe it because everything that was said there will be, become part of the record. I mean, that was what we had approved. That's the sense of how we, this is going to go forward with these neighborhood meetings.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
I just want to again echo Amy in that safe wishes for fellow councilperson and firefighter Greg DeWitt and his fellow firefighters and the rescue teams. And prayers for all, well prayers for healing for all of those affected by Hurricane Michael.
Great, thank you Laura. Pete?
I'm good.
Okay, Mike?
I'm good, just echoing the sentiments.
Yeah.
Okay, Fred?
Yeah, I, I want to tell everybody here that I know the mayor was there and I know Councilman O'Flynn's wife attended. There was a great forum put on at, last week on Tuesday night between, it was very interesting. It was Everglades Foundation of Florida and you had Big Sugar or Old Sugar on the left and they both were making points about what needs to be done to, to mitigate the red tide and the blue-green algae blooms and all that. And it was very, very interesting and I will say that both sides made some very good points and they scored points with the audience because I heard when, well, Big Sugar kept Because I heard when, well, Big Sugar kept making two points, which make a lot of sense to me, they said, "You know, the water coming from the north is really polluted. Why would you wait for the water to go into Lake Okeechobee, then come out of Okeechobee and then treat it? Why wouldn't you want to treat it before it gets into Lake O?" So, that's, that's a good point. They made up a, brought up another point about, there's a sewage treatment facility that's about 16 miles in our direction from Lake Okeechobee, and it's dumping a lot of effluent that's not as good as it ought to be into the river. So, these are all, I think there's things about the situation that bear looking into further, and I know in my, my own personal case, I'm going to try and get a lot smarter on this. I am not that, that we're going to have any opportunity to probably do much about other than pulling septic tanks out of Benita, which will help in the long run. That's it.
Great. Thank you. And I guess that, that kind of dovetails into, yesterday I went to a meeting, county commissioner meeting with most of the Lee County mayors, and, you know, we continue to look at the regulation and the flows, you know, when we don't get enough water in the dry season and get too much in the wet season, and we, we've discussed that here, and we were hopeful to get the support of the Lee County Commission. We did not get that to join us, so we will continue. We will be at the next meeting with the Lee County Commissioners. We have, we have a date coming up here at the end of the month with South Florida Water Management District to discuss that, and for the county to discuss that. And then, this thing happening on November 6th called the Elections in the State of Florida will come into play. We'll see who wins the governorship, and I guess we'll see who continues to serve at the will and the pleasure of the new governor of Florida on the South Florida Water Management District. So, there's a lot of moving pieces here. We continue the mayors of Lee County to be unified, to regulate the water. So, there again, I'll say it, we don't get too much when we don't need it and we don't, you know, and, and get, get more when we actually do need the water. So, we'll continue to work and monitor that for you. And then I wanted to mention on October 29th, we are having an event, the U.S. Conference of Mayors does a program with Major League Baseball called Play Ball, and last year, we had scheduled, but because of the hurricane, it got canceled. And this year, we're going to, we're going to do that on October 29th, and I believe it's at 5:00 PM, is that what we settled on, or 6?
6:00 PM.
6:00 o'clock. We're going to involve the Benita Springs Little League. And we're also, I've, I've asked Home Base to join us, and I think probably a few of you have heard of Home Base. It's a, it's a, it's a nonprofit that works actually, yeah, I couldn't have set this up any better had I tried, with the Boston Red Sox Foundation. They're, they're very active in Boston. They're very, and I have checked with the mayor of Boston, who I think some of you know I've met recently and have been communicating with, he's very active in this foundation in Boston. And because of JetBlue and because of a lot, a lot of different reasons, they want to model what they're doing in Boston with the Boston Red Sox Foundation down here. I said, "Coach, put me in." And Bob Gillette's very active with this program and other veterans, so if anybody wants to join us, that will be October 29th at 6:00 PM. Exactly where?
At, at, at the, at the Pine, our recreation center off of Pine Avenue, at the, at the Fields.
At the Fields, yeah, at the Fields. So, Dynamite, so you'll probably be hearing more about this organization, and I think some of us have been introduced there, so that should be a good opportunity to get some exposure and move forward and for the benefit of our veterans in, in the community who we already are very active with. So, that's what I have.
I had one thing. I had my first visit to Fenway Park Sunday night. Not bad.
Yeah, not bad, huh? Fantastic, that's great. Sunday night, ooh, okay, yeah, the, the win.
Yeah.
Yes, fantastic. That's wonderful. I had been up the previous weekend for the, against the Yankees, and that was, that was something else as well. Counsel, anything else? Okay, we are going to approval, a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
And that would be for October 3rd. There's been a motion and a second, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Flynn?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Simmons?
Aye. Great. Public comment. Members of the public that would like to speak at this time, please come forward.
Good morning again. For the record, Kathy McGrath. My memory was jogged when John Pano spoke. I completely forgot. Another thing near and dear to my heart, his Benita Springs Old 41 Expo, November 3rd, the Imperial River Conservancy is very much involved in it, as we were last year, and we are having the Imperial River Conservancy Pro Challenge. And our director, Dan Downenour, has gone out and obtained sponsors for all the prize bunny and the T-shirts and for the paddlers coming, going down the river. So, in fact, Dan, I believe, has been working very hard with the Downtown Alliance. I believe he became a member of it for months now, coordinating with John Pano for things the way we can work together with the river. And Fred, you were absolutely right with what you heard about the water entering north. I've heard this for a long time. In fact, someone who's an avid fisherman, born and raised over there, said, "Look, we get all that water from Orlando, comes down the Kissimmee, agriculture waste, animal waste and all, and it enters at the north end." So, it's, it's a very, very valid point. And something else I found out about the Kissimmee River was, I knew I had heard in the past, I can't tell you what year, that the Corps of Army Engineers, in their wisdom, were found, got a mandate from Congress that they could straighten it, and they actually took the Kissimmee River and straightened it, and then they restored it. They, again, was mandated by Congress, so it's now, it's serpentine thing. But, it is true that everyone shouldn't just blame Big Sugar because it's not all the southern, and although they, I think they are constructing a reservoir now that'll hold water in the rainy season and disperse it. So, people are trying to do things about it. So, anyway, remember November 1st, the Film Fest Gala, November 3rd, the Old 41 Expo. It's, it's very nice, and the merchants are going to have tents and tables and things